Hey, good morning, everyone. Welcome to our regular B O C C meeting for June 12th. Welcome to those that have come to the room, those that might be watching online or review in the meeting on video at a later date. Before we call the roll, I'd like to invite our county manager, Sean Fletcher, to provide an invocation and lead us in the pledge.
Let us pray. The word of God is the power of God unto salvation to everyone that believes in the name of Jesus. Dear Lord, Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity to come together in your presence. We ask, Lord, that you continue to watch over those who lay down their lives to save others. We ask that you continue to watch over our leadership. The word of God tells us that without wise leadership, a nation falls, and there is safety in having many advisors. We ask, Lord, that you continue to watch over this county and to give its leaders the knowledge and the wisdom to make wise decisions for those they serve. We ask that they continue to hear the voice of the people they serve. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Amanda, could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Richardson.
Here.
Commissioner Thayer.
Here.
Commissioner Schroeder.
Here.
All righty, we have a quorum. It's 9:03. We'll get going. First item we have is approval of the agenda and accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Our first item of business are the items on consent. I would accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the items on consent as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All righty. Elected official department head staff reports. Sherry, did you have anything? Susan? Oh, okay. Rhonda, our clerk and recorder.
Rhonda Braun, clerk and recorder. I just wanted to announce, and I was trying to put it up on the screen, but I'm having difficulties. Tomorrow night, we are having an elections town hall out at the fairgrounds at 6:30. And we will be presenting information about our elections, how we run our elections, what is a primary, what's the difference, what's going on. We have invited all the candidates to get all the information, and it's open to the public. We would love to see you there.
Thank you much. Any questions? Thanks. All right, moving on to staff reports. Monty, I know you had a couple of items for us.
Morning, Commissioners. Monty Hankins, Elbert County Public Works Director. I'm up before you today to talk about the 2024 road grader rotation that we have had in place since 2010. Since 2020, due to COVID supply shortages, we've had delays in receiving equipment, anywhere from a year to a year and a half to almost pushing two years out since we've had all the supply chain issues within the country. Road and Bridge, we've been rotating road graders typically four at a time since 2010. Every fourth year, there's a count of five graders go in that rotation. Those are on a buyback program where the county purchases them, but then it's a guaranteed buyback from either Caterpillar, John Deere, whoever gets the bid that year in a buyback. Therefore, that reduces the reduction cost dramatically for us over the four years that we keep the machines. And during that time, the bonus part is they're under warranty the entire time from front to back. So our repair costs are extremely, extremely low. Every now and then, we may have to fix a light or a mirror or something like that. Due to the supply chain shortages, we didn't anticipate the four machines that were in rotation this year would be delivered this year. We did get notified a little while ago that yes, those four machines are going to arrive to us or be delivered to us in September or October of this year. The cost of the machines is approximately $930,000. However, they are financed with us through a lease program, so the quarterly payment on those machines for the year of 2024 is going to be roughly $60,000. When this comes about, I will need approval on that item.
Okay. So it's only 60K this year, but it's a 930,000 contract, so it has to be signed by me?
Yes, sir.
All right. No, that makes sense, I understand. So you're just looking for approval for the 60K and then the overall new contract price?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, if you guys don't object, I'll sign that when it comes in, and then we'll put it on consent afterwards, just so we get that taken care of?
I have no objection.
Okay, thanks.
I also wanted to discuss, we're getting ready to fire up on the County Road 166. Most people know it as Singing Hills Road, pavement project phase one. Phase one will go from Delbert to County Road 13, both lanes, or County Road 13 to Delbert, however you choose to look at it. Road and Bridge budgeted for this year a total of $6 million for this job, this project, in anticipation of there being severe subgrade issues under that road, because historically in this county, we do have subgrade issues underneath the asphalt. After a bunch of geotech studies and findings, we really did realize or come to understand that the subgrade does not need to be mitigated. So we budgeted 6 million in anticipation of that. The overall project cost came out to $3,704,485. So this is going to create a savings for the county of $2,295,515, just to pretty much mill out four inches of the asphalt top and pave it back. We are going to widen out the shoulders a little bit and create a little bit of asphalt widened out past the white line, so there's a little buffer there. Next year, hopefully, if the budget allows, we will do phase two, which will be from County Road 13 over to County Road 21. You have any questions about that? That's due to start June 24th.
Not often somebody comes up and gives us a $2.2 million savings on a project, so thank you.
Yeah, it was really a refreshing discovery for us as well.
No, I know what the... We're going to be waiting on reimbursement from FEMA work for a while, so having that available is good. Any questions for Monty on this?
One of your previous presentations or discussions, I don't remember which, there was some frustration when you were looking at the right-of-ways. Is that, are those problems been resolved?
No, but if, and we don't have to resolve those now, but if we do end up taking that road in the future due to traffic count, and if the growth continues, creates a traffic count, we will have to go to four lanes. Now, when we go to four lanes through there, then yeah, we have right-of-way issues, and that'll have to be something that's brought up at that time. But for now, we have enough room to do what we're going to do in this project.
Thanks.
The third thing I would like to do today is introduce our new fleet manager. Ethan Meese was here with us previously as our very first county fleet manager from 2016 to 2022, in that he built the fleet management and fleet policies and setup that are in place currently. I know today we are doing a little bit of an update on some of that, but all the systems and items that Ethan created in the first time he was here are still in place today. He created a CIP that went out for 30 years, I believe, 30, 40 years. That is still running. It got a little off track with the flooding because we needed some specialized equipment, but that is still in operation fairly well. So Ethan took a couple-year hiatus from us, and the position opened back up, and he came back to us. And so I'd like to introduce to everybody and you guys, Ethan Meese.
Welcome back. Thanks.
So far, I mean, he's on day three, and already he's done a lot of good things. So made, fixed a lot of stuff. We had some, our fuel management system was having some issues. He got that going properly, so he's done a lot of good stuff already, straight out of the gate.
Great.
All right. That's all I have. Thank you.
All righty, thank you, Monty. All righty, and then Aaron.
I have come to speak on behalf of the proclamation that we'll be hearing about later in this meeting, as well as a recap of some of the severe weather we've been experiencing and a recap of the Stampede rodeo. I have invited some honored guests that I'd like to recognize now. Ares individuals, can you please stand? These are the amateur radio emergency services. They're instrumental in our emergency response. I've prepared a statement, which we'll discuss in just a moment. And then I've also invited the Stampede leadership from the Stampede rodeo, which we just had a great event, which I'll touch on as well. Please stand and be recognized. And we'll be hearing from them from their point of view of how this process and their implementation will be going, it's brief, after this. Thank you all for being here. Good morning, distinguished members of the board, elected officials, department heads, and members of the public. My name is Aaron M. Born, and I am the emergency manager for Elbert County's Office of Emergency Management. It is my distinct honor to stand before you today to acknowledge and celebrate the annual Amateur Radio Week, which will take place from June 17th to June 23rd of this year. This recognition is not just a formality, but a heartfelt tribute to the extraordinary contributions of the amateur radio operators in our community and beyond. Amateur radio operators have been celebrating over a century of the miracle of the human voice broadcast over the airwaves. It is important to acknowledge the profound impact this has had on bridging the gap between peoples, societies, and countries, fostering friendships and sharing ideas. These dedicated individuals have provided countless hours of community service, both in emergencies and to the local organizations, without any form of compensation. We also recognize their significant contributions to public events. These amateur radio operators, or HAMs, have generously offered free radio communications for local parades, fairs, and charitable events. Most recently, during the Stampede rodeo, they played an instrumental role in the planning process, ensuring the safety and security of the event and serving as the central point of information for emergency response stakeholders. The newly established system and protocol implemented by the Elbert County Office of Emergency Management effectively addressed the capability gaps that have become a growing concern with the event and the community's growth. I am pleased to report that the event was a great success, and this system will serve as the working plan moving forward for years to come for this event and all others similar to it within Elbert County. This success could not have been achieved without the dedication efforts of Ares and the Stampede rodeo leadership. Their selflessness and commitment to public service are truly commendable. Their invaluable support extends to our emergency response organizations within Elbert County and beyond. Elbert County greatly appreciates the dedication of these individuals who serves as weather spotters for the Skywarn Program from the National Weather Service. Their vigilance and expertise in monitoring weather conditions are vital to our community's preparedness and response efforts. While providing emergency weather overwatch for the Stampede rodeo, the Ares team identified a possible tornado in northeastern Elbert County near Colorado Road 166. This information prompted Elbert County's Office of Emergency Management to coordinate with the local fire district to ensure life safety, response efforts, and damage assessments in the affected area. Fortunately, according to the Agate Fire Fire, the tornado briefly touched down before moving into Lincoln County. No major incidents or damages were reported, and no rescues were needed. This serves, however, as a reminder for us, for all of us, to remain vigilant and continue our collaborative efforts in emergency response. The American Radio Relay League, the leading organization for the amateur radio in the United States, plays a pivotal role in organizing and supporting these efforts. This year's amateur radio field day exercise will be taking place on June 22nd and 23rd, and it will be a 24-hour preparedness exercise. This event demonstrates the radio amateur skills and readiness to provide self-supporting communications without the reliance of existing infrastructure. Therefore, this year, we honor and celebrate the invaluable contributions of our amateur radio operators. Their dedication, expertise, and community spirit are an inspiration to all of us. Thank you for your attention, and please join me in expressing our deepest gratitude to these remarkable individuals for their unwavering service and commitment to our community. Thank you once again. I look forward to working together to continue in improving our emergency response capabilities and community services. I would like to invite Bill Sneed, as well as the president, new president, Kevin Whitaker, and Ralph, I don't know your last name, Ralph?
Janatell.
Janatell, thank you, to speak on their experience from the rodeo and the services that the county has provided in collaboration.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Well, thanks for having us again here, two times in a month or so. I'll just start off and say my first year volunteering for the Stampede was the year of the tornado in 2014, and it was just scramble, scramble, you know, we had no plan, and that was really what was the catalyst for us to say, okay, we need to do something. The other thing that the dynamic that we have is multiple entities. We have the sheriff, the fire department from Elizabeth, the police department from Elizabeth, the posse. So you have to coordinate all these different entities and how they communicate together, and then also our security and staff on site as well. This, I've been in these meetings for four years now, and this year's been the most collaborative, open, and supportive meetings to date. And with the transition with Aaron, we, Bill and I met with Aaron and sat down and chatted and shared our information that we had, and it was, it was really nice to kind of get his buy-in and understand his experience. There's no way that we pull this event off with this collaborative group, and I just want to express to you how that went this year. In my mind, pretty flawless. And with that all, Bill knows more detail from this, but that was just my two cents.
Thank you.
Bill Sneed, just a little information. I have 37 years with Elizabeth Stampede, so there's hard to say that there's something that's going to happen that hasn't already been witnessed. But the thing that I think stands out the most for our event is, and any event, is the ability to react to any situation that might arise during the time that there's a performance. As you know, there's over 2,000 people in our stands, there was over 3,000 people at the concert, and about eight years ago, the Elizabeth Fire Department came to us and said, you know, you've got all these people here, what's your plan? And we kind of looked at each other and go, well, maybe we ought to have one. So we started the planning session, and it's based for years around the weather events. Possibility of evacuation just came up in the last three years as another leg on the stool, if you will. You know, what if we call for an evacuation? How are you going to handle it? So we have created plans that complement what the county has done, and the county has been an excellent partner in guiding and providing information on what to be in those plans and how to work with those. In our environment, obviously, we're, we have not only spectators, but we have contestants, we have stock contractors, we have volunteers, we have people scattered everywhere. So being able to communicate is one of the highest priorities that we have in our venue. And you're also probably aware that most of the entities that Kevin mentioned have their own radio systems. So it was vitally important for us to have Aaron and his team set up a communication center with a radio from everybody that has something to say or would want something to say, and then coordinate that communications with not only us going back and forth, but also with them individually. And I can say from my observations and standpoint, we were able to accomplish a quick response, a lot of awareness of what was taking place, and the ability to then look inside and say, you know, how does this impact us if it goes forward? So it's improved, and it's at a point where we are very happy with what happened this year, but as every year, there's always additional things that we can do. There's also, we adjust the plans based on who's participating and who's not. Elizabeth Police became a major role player this year, where they had been less important in the past. So all the plans adjust, and with an office at the county level, we have somebody that can actually speak to all those entities. We speak to them in meetings, we get together, everybody talks, and we have some leadership from the county, and it's very beneficial. Thank you very much.
You didn't leave me much to say, Bill. My name is Ralph Janatell. I was, I'm the volunteer chairman of the security committee. My responsibility is the safety of everybody involved, everyone, including leadership, contestants, livestock, anything you can think of within that venue. And I can honestly say a huge thank you to the commissioners, to everyone in the county, especially to law enforcement. Without the collaborative efforts of Elbert County Sheriff, Posse, Elizabeth Police, and especially Aaron and his group, it would have been impossible to be boots on the ground without having that, those resources available to us. As Bill mentioned, communication was paramount. In the past, we've had various channels, and people are not sure where to really go for issues or problems. We were able to implement a very strict communication strategy that allowed us to communicate directly with Aaron if there were any issues, which there were hardly any, as Bill mentioned. We had, I think that was the biggest, probably the single biggest improvement, and one of the things that we found was, was really instrumental in us allowing to have a safe and enjoyable event for everyone in the county and that, for that matter of fact, for everyone in the state, and from other places, too. It's amazing how many people we had from out of state that have come. I think the important thing to remember is, too, that this puts us on the map, not only as a stampede, as an event, but also as a county, and I think that's important, and everyone really collaborated. The last thing that I will tell you is that with four, three or four meetings with sheriff, posse, fire, police, it really was a collaborative effort. We insisted this year on making sure that everyone that was involved, everyone that was going to be there with some responsibility, knew who the other person was. It's great to know who they are on the radio, but it's even better to know who they are in person, to be able to shake their hand and have a personal relationship with that person, because then when it comes right down to it, you know, where the rubber meets the road, you know who you're talking to. And I can honestly tell you, without the collaborative efforts, we would have been, it would have been a different event, and we were very successful, but it's, I think, in thanks primarily to the cooperation of everybody, not just one person and not just one group. So I wanted to say thank you to the commissioners, thank you to the county, thank you to Sheriff Norton, his group, everyone that was involved. Without their involvement, we, well, I mean, having their involvement was paramount. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I know we had a proclamation prepared, and I know during Aaron's presentation, he covered all the, kind of, in a much better way, the boring wherethis piece, so I'll just jump down to the therefore, that the Board of County Commissioners of Elbert County is officially recognizing and designating June 17th to 23rd as Amateur Radio Week in Elbert County, and I've signed it, I'll pass it on. But thank you, gentlemen, for coming out. Yeah, you hit a lot of the key points. I mean, when it comes to emergency operations, when you know each other ahead of time, and you know, you know, you've gained trust and understanding of what each of you do, it's so much more easy when the situation gets, I guess, a little more fluid, that, you know, who to contact, what to expect of them, and things happen. But for the Stampede, and you are probably, you know, since the Fair Board's not here, I'll say you are one of the two really marquee events here in the county. It's always done professionally. You showcase Elizabeth, the county, the people of the county tremendously, and that's very appreciated. I was able to be there Friday evening, and Saturday and Sunday for the events. They're always tremendous. It's, it's, just thank you for what you do. And I know it's more than just those in the room, but, I mean, there's hundreds of volunteers out there, and as you mentioned, contractors, cowboys, the citizens that come, it just, it's a, it's a great thing to have continuing in this county, so thank you. Do you guys have anything?
I just got a quick comment. I was at the Elbert County Douglas County Cattlemen's meeting last night, and a lot of those people that were there had been to, and I can't tell you how complimentary each and every one of them were, particularly then when they were comparing this one to prior years. And some of them, you know, are as old as me, so they've been to several of them in the past. And each and every one of them that I talked to said, this was the best time ever. Thank you.
I'll just echo onto that. I think we saw a little bit of a picture of all the different planning and collaboration that has to take place to put a, in on this, just on the communication piece. And I can't imagine all the other different things that you guys had to put together to make an event like this work. So I just want to say thank you for your efforts for volunteering. I know it pays well, that's why you do it, but really, thank you for all the time and effort you put in to make a wonderful event.
Thank you very much. And whoever figured out parking, that great job, because I was not sure how that was going to work, but it was, it was, it was, it was a very, very smooth from the, from the attendee point of view, so.
The other feedback, school district, we just so you know, we pay school districts so they're not taxed on it, but that offer the same way across the road, and just offer a better way for patrons to get groceries over. So thank you.
Okay.
All the nice, I mean, nice.
Yeah. And just for those that may have not caught the comment on the mic, there was just a thank you to the school district, the Stampede did, I guess, contract to have them move people safely across the road from parking and over at the Napa and Dairy Queen area. But with that, I'd like to just invite you all up, and we'll do our obligatory photo with the, with the proclamation. Certainly, the guys from Ares and Stampede, you're welcome to join. We'll move on now to open public comment from citizens. This is an opportunity to bring up issues that may not be on the agenda today. If you have questions, we may not be able to get immediate answers to you, but we just ask that you keep your comments to three minutes, provide your name and address. ask that you keep your comments to three minutes, provide your name and address for the record, and the time is yours, ma'am.
Morning commissioners, my name is Corey Cowan, C-O-W-A-N, and I live on County Road 174. Our address is 11401. Um, like I said, I'm a resident of Kiowa and here to comment on two recently awarded construction projects. As a local professional engineer in construction, I frequently review projects out to bid and awarded projects. Two projects funded by Albert County were awarded in 2024 that are concerning. The projects I'm referring to are the County Road 166 repay project, phase one, and the 2024 Albert County Fairgrounds parking lot. Uh, the lowest bidder was not awarded for these projects, which means an additional $937,579.27 were given to the contractors for these projects, almost $1 million. I have several questions regarding this process. Um, the first one, why was the lowest bidder not awarded for these projects? It is apparent in the scope of services for the invitation for bid for the parking lot, um, that it's, it's vague and does not include quantities, material specifications, where the handicap parking area is. What drainage channel needs to be realigned? How can contractors prepare accurate bids based on this information? And how are you expected to get competitive bids, um, you know, based on that vague information? A clear answer to this should be provided as this is not typical practice. Number two, who is approving not awarding the lowest bidder? And are the commissioners aware that this is happening? Um, the only available information is the notices of approval, um, that are signed by the Public Works Director and County Manager. When are these contracts reviewed by the commissioners? Are they available in our, in your B O C C meetings, um, in the minutes, any of that? Um, are they approved by you guys? And are they approved by, approved and reviewed by the county attorney? Um, as a resident on County Road 174, the additional $1 million could have made a huge impact on the condition of this road and even paved it. Um, I was told by the Public Works Director that this road will eventually be paved by a developer, but we've also heard that they're not going to break ground, the nearby developers are not going to great break ground until 2028. So it's, it's apparent that lack of funds for maintenance and rehab are a huge driving factor. I understand the importance of having an ADA compliant parking lot for the fairgrounds and the importance of improving County Road 166, which has a large volume of traffic. However, the commissioners, county manager, county attorney, and public works director need to provide an explanation of why additional funds were provided to these projects and not other dangerous areas of the county. We're talking a lot of money. It's not just like 50 grand. Commissioners, as public servants to your local community, you need to be aware that the residents of Albert County are watching how funds are being used and will be asking questions. You have a lot of educated and experienced professionals that are invested in the construction in this county and nearby areas. These two projects are prime examples of misuse of county funds. My husband and I are not against the development in this county. However, if this county prefer, if this is how the county funds are provided by the developers or through taxpayer dollars will be used in the future, we have lots of concerns. We will be asking questions and paying attention. Please provide answers to the questions above.
Thank you, ma'am.
To all the attachments.
Thank you. Peter, thank you. Oh, okay. We'll answer it if it rings. Um, thank you. Don, thank you.
Good morning, Don Gray, 16,000 Highway 86. Um, just want to give you an update of the Excel project that's still proposed. As I understand it, we haven't heard anything as an application going in yet. Um, if I may. I've just given the commissioners a copy of a flyer that was sent out by Excel last week. Um, it's in regards to them having a meeting, them meaning Excel, having a meeting at the county fairgrounds tonight, well, tonight, this afternoon from three to five. Um, I believe this meeting came to be because the E C E A requ, asked them why they were only doing a meeting for seven landowners a couple, three weeks ago. And now they've invited all the landowners that are involved at that. I'll just give you a brief read to what it actually speaks to. It says owners of property crossed by the proposed Colorado power pathway transmission line route in Albert County are invited to a meeting to discuss Colorado's power pathway with Robert, Robert Kennedy, President of Excel Energy Colorado, and Sandra Johnson, Vice President of Excel Energy Transmission. They're going to be speaking to Colorado's power pathway facilities proposed in Albert County, including, includes approximately 50 miles of 345 kilowatt double circuit transmission line to be placed in service in 2027. What I find interesting about this is we appreciate them having a meeting that's not required, um, to have all the landowners there. But the interesting part to this, to me, is the last meeting, they said they're not going to do anything about it. They're going, they'll listen, but they're not going to change any of their proposed, what they're going to do, but they're going to listen to this. And yet they have not put an application into the county and they keep moving forward, slowly but surely forward. So the question I guess I have is, I assume they have not submitted an application yet. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Don. Do we have any other public comment?
Commissioners, uh, Tim Olmer, 44015, Kiowa Benner Road. Um, I'm up here as well as a citizen of the county, um, over concerns over the 166 project and the fairgrounds project awards. Um, the previous commenter covered a lot of it, um, so I will delve into more of the contract side of it. Um, I am also one of the contractors that bid on the project. Um, I waited until this meeting, until the last one, to make it very clear that I wasn't trying to change an award. Um, but the, uh, starting with the fairgrounds project, the lack of an RFP, it literally was four sentences, um, did not bode for equitable competitive bids for that project. Um, when the, um, after talking to the low bidder, uh, when he reached out for con, uh, for questions, the answers he was given to bid on, uh, is not what is being installed at the project today. So obviously the answers were not given to the number one or the number two low bidder. And it's very odd that the county took the number three bidder. Um, going down to the, um, and then at the end of the project, the number one and the number two bidder did not receive any correspondence from the county as to why they were not awarded the project. Going on to the County Road 166 project, um, a phenomenal $800,000 difference. And yes, our company was the low bidder. Um, but beyond that, uh, this is a bonded project, therefore there is minimal to no risk to the county. Um, we had performed projects with the county on other projects. Um, and why, um, we went after this project fairly hard, uh, because, uh, myself and numerous other executives and shareholders of the company all live in or own ground within Albert County. So as taxpayers, we have a, you know, we wanted to make sure we were taking care of our own selves as well. Um, not the first project that we haven't been awarded, so not, nothing like that's not the first project we were the low bidder on that we weren't awarded. However, we typically get a, um, you know, if there's a big difference in a bid or something, you get a phone call as a low bidder to verify that everything is included in that. That professionalism was not shown by any member of the county. Um, and then after the award was not granted to us, um, so that we could explain to our vendors, um, our material suppliers and everybody else as to why we were not awarded, um, I personally reached out via phone and left a message for the Director of Public Works. I went in person to the Director of Public Works office and left a message, and then followed up with an email to the Director of Public Works and the county manager, and this was over a month ago. Um, and I still have not received response from either one of them. Um, this lack of professionalism, as well as the, um, way these bids were awarded, to me demands an evaluation of paid county employees and whether or not they have the best interest of the taxpayers in mind. So I look forward to you guys' responses to the previous commenter as well, um, and then to these questions as well. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Do we have any other public comment at this time? Okay, saying none, we'll close public comment. Um, excuse me, on the, uh, Excel project, um, just, just to confirm, yeah, the, there's been no application received at this time. So, um, as to the bidding, um, are not knowing the details at this table, like certainly we can't answer specifically at this time. We'll, we'll certainly ask the questions of staff. Um, the process is set up for, um, you know, not necessarily low bid, but best value, um, to how that was determined or the communication pieces. We will, we will ask questions. Any comment?
Just a quick comment on that Excel thing is I drive between my house and here every day, and I go past some of the routing that's on your map here. And for the last week or 10 days, it looks like there was a service rig out there drilling what I think are soil uh, evaluation things. Nobody's talked to us about it or anything, but I just driven, drove, drove by there and, and it's there. So they are talking to the people and doing things, but they haven't talked to us.
Thanks. And I appreciate, uh, the first speaker for providing those questions in writing as well. So thank you. Moving on to discussion items, um, we've got a presentation regarding ranked choice voting from our clerk and recorder, Rhonda.
Thank you, commissioners. Rhonda Braun, Albert County Clerk and Recorder. Um, I'm going to start off with a video, hopefully, to, that explains ranked choice voting really well. So let's see if we can. Oops, sound, sound, sound. All right. Do I need to do something different for sound? Do we know? I don't know. I think you can't even hear me. Oh, it's not. Oh, crap. Sorry. Ah, murder.
Looks like you, looks like you had a choice for the click share speakers. Okay.
In a Memphis ranked choice voting election, voters get three candidate choices. They choose their first pick, second, and so on. In this election, there were 40 votes for Janice, who is in first place, 20 votes for Emily in second place, 18 votes for Steve for third place, 11 votes for Joe, seven votes for Patrice, and four votes for Frank. In this example, there are 100 voters, so 51 votes is needed for a majority win. In a traditional election, the type that has been used for decades, if no one got a majority of the votes, there would be a runoff between the two top vote getters. In this case, Janice and Emily. Voters would have the opportunity to listen to these two candidates and their positions and make a final choice in a traditional runoff election. That's how democracy works. But with ranked choice voting, it's not one person, one vote. In this case, people have three votes to choose their first, second, and third place choices. With ranked choice voting, an algorithm is used to determine the winner. Since Frank has the lowest number of votes, he is eliminated, and his votes go to the voter's second place vote. After election officials do a recount, Janice gets these votes, so she now has 44 votes. After the recount, Patrice is in last place, so she is eliminated. Sorry, Patrice. Election officials now do a recount to move her votes to her supporters' second choice, Frank. But because Frank was already eliminated, they move to the third choice, Steve. Adding these third place votes to Steve, he now has 25 votes. Election officials do another recount and find that Joe is in last place and is eliminated. Election officials looked to see what the second place votes were, and they were for Frank, who has already been eliminated. So they looked to the third place, and that would be Patrice. But she was also eliminated. So where do these votes go? Essentially, they get thrown out into the trash and not counted. These are called exhausted votes. The election officials do another recount and find Emily is in last place with 20 votes, and she is eliminated, and her second place votes go to Steve. So now he has 45 votes. Another recount shows Janice has the lowest number of votes and is eliminated, leaving Steve the winner in this ranked choice voting election. But how can that be? The winner needed 51 votes to get a majority, and Steve only got 45. He was third in the popular vote and would not have gone to the runoff in a traditional election. But with ranked choice voting, he won? And what about the 11 voters who had their ballots tossed in the trash and not counted? If you recall, the difference between Steve and Janice was just one vote. How would these 11 people vote if given the choice between Janice, who came in first place, and Steve, who came in third? These voters were disenfranchised with ranked choice voting. So let's review the ranked choice voting method. A third place candidate won after shuffling second and third place votes around. He would not have won in a traditional election that has been used for generations. He did not have a majority of the votes. More voters voted against him than for him. Those that insist ranked choice voting guarantees a majority winner are just wrong. It doesn't add up. A whopping number of votes were thrown out, much more than the difference between Janice and Steve. This would never have happened in a traditional election where it is one person, one vote. In conclusion, numerous cities have repealed or rejected ranked choice voting over the past few years because, as you can see, ranked choice voting is not a fair vote.
So it's really simple here, Thomas.
Just a second. Obviously, um, okay, we're still, still playing. So there's, um, just a little explanation of how ranked choice voting works. It is not one person, one vote. The, there are proponents circulating petitions right now to institute ranked choice votings, ranked choice voting in Colorado. Um, I want to talk a little bit about other places that have done that. The, um, the proponent says Alaska instituted ranked choice voting, and they did in 2022 for statewide and federal elections. It is now on the ballot to repeal that, and they got 150% of the signatures that they needed to get that onto the ballot to repeal it. Um, to institute the ranked choice voting in Alaska, funds from outside of Alaska were $6,194,081. Funds from within Alaska to institute ranked choice voting were $20,000. Nearly 60% of the state voted for a Republican in the U.S. House race multiple times, and a Democrat won every time. The number of candidates increased 700% when switching from a closed primary to a jungle primary system. Alaska had the lowest voter turnout in history and the highest cost ever for an election in 2022. In the special govern, governor vacancy election, uh, there were 48 candidates on the ballot. In the first round, Sarah Palin got 46% In the first round, Sarah Palin got 46% of the votes, and the winner ended up being Mary Peltola, who placed fourth in the first round, and then she won after the votes were reallocated. So in Elbert County, we have a CD4 race going right now that we have several candidates. We could have 10,000 votes for Susie Kew for the CD4 congressional race. When the results are put together with all 20 of the other counties, if Susie Kew is not the top vote-getter, all those votes will be redistributed to other candidates. So I don't even know how we would report what Elbert County voted for, Elbert County voters. In a state or federal race, the tabulation cannot be done at a local level. In Maine, they have ranked choice voting, and they take thumb drives, and they hand-deliver them to a central count location, where they put all the votes together and reallocate votes. There could not be election night reporting. From what I have researched, it could take days, weeks to get any results. We, in Colorado, we would have to wait currently, eight days after the election, to get all the ballots in. So if voters drop a ballot in a ballot box in another county before 7:00 PM on Election Day, those will count, but we don't have them yet, so we'd have to wait for those. And then any cures, or any military or overseas voters that had postmarked their ballot before Election Day. So we have to wait eight days for all of those, and then report, excuse me, all of our results to a central location so the votes could be redistributed or reallocated through this ranked choice voting process. From what we are hearing, voters would like less technology in elections, not more. There is a big push for hand-count. Hand-count would be impossible. There would be no way to hand-count or audit a ranked choice race. The estimated cost for Colorado to institute ranked choice voting is $9 to $10 million. I've heard up to $20 million for certain scenarios. Some of the costs are upgrading all the voting systems. Voter education is huge. The printing, revising our score, our voter registration system. The election night reporting would not work with this. Our auditing system would not work with this. The voting systems now are not set up to handle ranked choice voting, and the proposed initiative would be for state, state and federal elections, so we would have both kinds on the ballot. In, on Senate Bill 24210, this year in Colorado, is the Elections Cleanup Bill. At the very last minute, on a Sunday afternoon, there was an amendment added to that that would require 12 different municipalities to run ranked choice voting elections before we could institute it on a statewide basis. That, like I said, that was added last minute on a Sunday afternoon, and that would delay implementation until 2028. The proponents of the bill to, that are circulating petitions to get this instituted would like it to start in 2026. The initiatives circulating, one of them, one of the key ones is backed by a man named Kent Theory, and it's initiative, proposed initiative number 310. It would change, it would be a change to statutes, and it would get rid of party primaries and do a jungle primary. I mentioned that earlier, but it would be all candidates, no matter what party, would be on the same ballot, and the top four vote-getters would advance to the general election. And so, I didn't put this slide up, but you can kind of see there's, this is the Alaska one I was talking about. So it would end up being, one of his other things that he wants to do is make it so all candidates had to petition onto the ballot. So it would end up being a pay-to-play system. With the candidates with the most money and the most backing being able to get out there, and the regular citizens would not have the option to go through caucus and assembly, and the parties would not have the option to designate their own candidates. So this would, this would effectively get rid of the parties, the major parties, because they would not have a role in selecting their own candidates. The initiative circulating petitions against the ranked choice voting, there's three of them. Number one is Initiative 201. It would prohibit ranked choice voting. And it's pretty clear, these are constitutional amendments. So if they gather enough signatures and get this on the ballot and it's passed, then that would take care of the one that wants to institute ranked choice voting. I will tell you, the last several years, we have gotten pages of rules from the Secretary of State for ranked choice voting, so they are anticipating this coming in. So this constitutional amendment would be key to keep that out of our state. Initiative 202 preserves ballot access through caucus and assembly and through petition. So candidates would be able to choose their way to get on the ballot. And Initiative Number 278 closes the primaries. So that preserves the right of the members of a political party to choose their own candidates. Ranked choice voting violates the one-person, one-vote rule. It is complicated, it's expensive, it can disenfranchise voters. As you saw in the video, there are voters that will not even get their ballots counted. It will delay election results. Colorado voters will not benefit from ranked choice voting. If proposed initiatives 201, 202, and 278 gather enough signatures to get on the ballot and are passed by voters, Colorado will be able to join the states that have banned ranked choice voting. And I don't have them written down here. I know Florida is one, and there are several other states that have banned ranked choice voting. And they will be able to preserve voters' rights and the ability for candidates to access the ballot. The website to get more information on those initiatives is coloradocounts.com. And there's a lot of really good information on those and how to get involved with that. The Kent Theory, T-H-I-R-Y, is the proponent of the bill trying to institute ranked choice voting. And I'm sorry I didn't write down the website, but if you look that up, you can get quite a bit of information on what his goals are with instituting the ranked choice voting. Also, I can make available, I just got a brochure from, or a presentation from Steve Schleicher, the El Paso County Clerk, and he gave me permission to share that. And he's put together a very nice presentation with more facts in there, where it's used, how it's used, what are some of the, some of the things that are against it. So, any questions?
I have a couple, just to tee them up. First of all, thank you for the thorough presentation. It's very good. It is a complicated voting process, and to try and make it so that people can understand is difficult. So I appreciate the, the presentation. Couple things, can you keep us updated on the status of the ballot? Or this, if these initiatives 201, 202, and 278 will be on the ballot? I know in the past, this board has taken positions on initiatives, and I'd certainly be interested in looking at that with those. And secondly, the thing that really concerns me, there's several items here, but particularly how the election is audited under the ranked choice voting is troubling to me. I know that since 2020, the Elbert County Elections Department has done some hand-count verifications, whether it's the entire election or certain races. And it's my understanding that that is not available if this is a ranked choice voting.
So, the audit that we do now, we pull a ballot, and then we can compare it to the cast vote record and see how it was counted. So I'm sure we could do that, or we could pull the ballot, we could see how it originally counted, but then once they're redistributing the votes, yeah, we have no idea to tell where, where those votes went.
And with the current climate of people being concerned about election integrity, for it all to be just completed through a machine at the state, I think would raise a lot of red flags for people. So I appreciate the report and just to keep us updated.
Now, same, kind of the, it's complicated enough when you show a simple example. But the fact that every county would just have to turn over their data, and there's no way to, I mean, at least now you can look at the map of the state, and you can total up everybody's vote across all the counties and see if it matches what the state came up with. As you said, there's just a lot of concern about the integrity of voting right now. And if, as you said, if you got the fourth-place person winning as they did in Alaska, I just don't think this is something that folks have been ready for. And the fact that some votes are just discarded and don't count for anybody is concerning as well. Some voters apparently get two or three, the algorithm allows them two or three votes along the way, which is a departure, so. You had mentioned the 201 was a constitutional measure, were the other two constitutional as well? Okay. So they'll be having to collect signatures throughout the state on each of those? Yeah, yeah, so the same. I appreciate just kind of, and they've all been approved for signature collection at this point?
They have 310, which is Kent Theory's, just got out of the Supreme Court, and he is backed by big, big, big money, kind of like what I said in Alaska. So they were out collecting signatures the next day. They must have had their printer on speed dial. And the other initiatives are just regular people trying to get volunteers. So it's really an uphill battle. So as much as we can get the word out, these guys need, need a lot of help.
And the 310 was a statutory measure, not?
Yes.
So those can all be collected in Denver? They don't have to get?
Correct.
A percentage of each, it's a senate districts, I think.
Yeah, and they have paid volunteers. Somebody the other day ran into somebody collecting signatures for 310, and they said, "Well, what is this?" And the lady's like, "I don't know. I'm just collecting signatures." So they have that at their disposal. Can I add just a little bit off the subject? I was wanting to update you on Dominion. They did, Steve Bennett did send back answers to the questions that we had sent him, and I did send those on to the board for review. So he did provide answers to that. So we will need to sit down and look at Clear Ballot and Dominion both on our voting systems. See which one we want to go with.
Could you run those answers by IT as well?
Absolutely.
A little concerned with the one that very specifically said there were no wireless or Bluetooth cards. It kind of skates past whether that's integrated into the motherboard type, and that's about the level of my knowledge. And I'm just kind of curious to see what our IT folks would think of that response specifically.
Yeah, because we have been told that all the equipment is off the shelf, and they have to order it with that. The other thing is, we are prohibited, it is a felony for us to verify that or have anybody verify that.
Understood. I guess, is there any public comment or input on this? Okay, seeing none. Yeah, if you can keep us informed, but I think we would, we will likely, I think from the faces up here, make some sort of public statement, either resolution or open letter, urging people to look at this, this topic and avail themselves to petitions. At least get this on the ballot so people can decide.
Very much, thank you.
One side or the other. Alrighty, speaking of elections, we have a discussion facing a term limits question on the ballot. Ma'am?
So, thank you. Hello, Michelle Ingersoll, 8445, County Road 122 in Kiowa. So in April, I stated the importance of having and getting qualified people who are eligible and willing to run for the offices of the assessor, clerk and recorder, coroner, sheriff, surveyor, and treasurer. I requested a measure to be placed on the November 2024 ballot for these six departments to be able to serve, if elected, up to, but no more than three consecutive terms. So you need three things. You need support, ballot statement, and objective. So firstly, the support. A survey was conducted online to determine what kind of interest Elbert County citizens have. And in a short, brief period of time, from April 21st to June 3rd, they answered 11 questions. And I have the questions printed out if you want them. I can give them to you now. So the first question was, are you an Elbert County citizen? The second question was their affiliation. So 65.1% were Republicans, 27.7% were independent, 4.8% Democrats, and 2.4 didn't know or they were something else. The third question was their age, and it was starting at age 18. So the median of 31% were between the ages of 55 and 64. Then it was 65 to 74 at 28.6%, 13.1% were at 45 to 54, 8.3% were the ages 35 to 44, and 19% were the ages of 18 to 34. So the fourth and fifth questions combined here asked if they knew that the departments didn't make changes to the policy, they didn't oversee county management, that they had to meet mandatory state guidelines, statutes, and deadlines. 17% did not know that. And then questions six through 11 listed the six departments individually asking if this department, one of the six, is skilled and effective at his or her job, would you like the choice and opportunity to reelect for a third term, terminate and elect somebody else, or undecided? So the average of all six of these departments, again, asked individually, the average is 63% were in support to reelect for a third term, and 11.15% were actually undecided. And you have the breakdowns there. Do you want me to read them each individually? Okay. So secondly, you need the ballot language. Each of these six departments would be listed individually on the ballot. Okay? So the title would be Term Limitation Limited Three Terms. The question is, shall the Office of Elbert County clerk and recorder be limited to serve no more than three consecutive terms as permitted by Article 18, Section 2 of the Colorado Constitution? If you need to add beginning on or after January 1st, 2025, you can do so. I don't know if that's a requirement. So yes would be for and no would be against. So same thing for each department. Term limitation limited three terms. Question, shall the Department of Elbert County Clerk and Recorder be limited to serve no more than three consecutive terms as permitted by Article 18, Section 11 of the Colorado Constitution? To make it official, do you want me to repeat it for each of the other four?
No, no, that's fine. No, no, that's fine.
So with that, the three things needed to add, again, to add an item to the ballot was support, which I stated there, the average is 63% in support of reelecting to a third term. The ballot statements just said, and the objective, to give the option for a qualified and skilled individual to run for a third term if he or she wanted, and if he or she was elected, and to let the citizens decide. So there's no real downside to adding it to the ballot.
Questions or comments?
I appreciate this. When we first put the policy together, how to put a initiative or something forward like this at the county level, this is exactly, I think, what was envisioned, to do the research and, and put everything together. So I appreciate following the policy and, and going forward with that. So that's, I'm impressed with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm curious, and I, I know it was a relatively short amount of time that you were surveying. How many folks did respond?
Yesterday was 84, this morning was 85.
Okay.
A lot of the places, the pages, say for example on Facebook, they'd allow me to put it on there, and then for whatever reason, they'd take it off. Or they replied back and said, "It looks like you're trying to eliminate term limits." Where does it say eliminate? No. It's keeping term limits up to three terms.
Okay. No, thank you. Anything from the room? Okay. Seeing none, no, I appreciate that, Michelle. Thanks. Okay, moving on to our action items for the day. First item we've got is consideration of the minutes from our last meeting. I'd accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the May 22, 2014, 2024 minutes as written and dispense with the reading of those minutes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the minutes of the May 22 meeting and dispense with the reading. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. All right, next couple of items will be done in public hearing. The first is a liquor license transfer for the Elizabeth Restaurant doing business as Spring Valley Golf Club. I would accept a motion to open public hearing at this time.
Mr. Chairman, I move we open a public hearing on a liquor license transfer for Elizabeth Restaurant LLC doing business as Spring Valley Golf Club.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to open public hearing on this item. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Turn it over to you, Amanda.
Thank you. We received an application for transfer of liquor license from ER Business Golf LLC. They're changing their name to Elizabeth Restaurant LLC. There's really not a lot of changer, changes, other than one of the previous owners is now kind of more in the forefront. And so there's multiple people who own within this company, and then one of them is just moving forward more. So still two in the, you know, owners that are more involved than the others, but because of that, it triggers a transfer, the name change of the business, and then the moving around of, of ownership. Other than that, everything that is required has been submitted and completed. A background check has been done, and there are no concerns from staff. I did also send the sheriff, asking him if he had any concerns, and I don't believe he had any. And so staff is recommending approval of the transfer of liquor license, and a representative from Spring Valley Golf is here today.
Thank you. So they're currently operating with a temporary?
I'm sorry, yes. Temporary liquor license was issued after they submitted a complete packet on May 14th, and it is good until September 11th, which will allow them to operate while they're going through the transfer.
All righty, thank you. Any questions for staff? Vladimir, did you have anything you'd want to add? Or, I'm glad to see you open again, definitely.
No comments, so we're very happy to be open as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Vladimir? Seeing none? Okay. I'll open for public comment at this time. Seeing none, we'll close public comment, and I would accept a motion to transfer the license.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the transfer of liquor license for Elizabeth Restaurant LLC, DBA Spring Valley Golf Club.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the transfer of the license for Elizabeth Restaurant doing business at Spring Valley Golf Club. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. I'd accept a motion to close public hearing on this item.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we close a public hearing on liquor license transfer for Elizabeth Restaurant LLC doing business at Spring Valley Golf Club.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to close public hearing. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. We're out of public hearing on that item. The next item we have is the second reading and possible approval of an ordinance to protect the right, right to carry in sensitive spaces in accordance with SB 24-131. I'd accept a motion to open public hearing on this item.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we open a public hearing on the second reading and possible approval of an ordinance to protect the right to carry in sensitive places in accordance with SB 24-131.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to open public hearing. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. We're in public hearing. We did the first reading of this at our last meeting. Senate Bill 24-131 at the state level was, it was signed by the governor. It goes into effect, I believe, one July of this year. It added to the areas across the state where it was impermissible to carry firearms. We felt that was inappropriate, the expansion of the areas that were designated. It does allow within the statute itself for local governments to pretty much nullify the impacts of that law in areas that were under the control of that local government. So for that, in that case, it would be for the unincorporated areas of Elbert County Meeting Rooms buildings, et cetera. It essentially maintains the status quo of folks' ability to defend themselves if need be and others. Personally believe that if, if the government is going to restrict the right to defend themselves, and it then has the obligation to provide protection, and we don't have the staffing and the resources to do so, if that were to be. So I think this is entirely appropriate. I don't know if you guys have any opening comments on that?
I agree. The, the term sensitive spaces, if you're being threatened, that space is certainly sensitive to you, and you should have the right to be able to defend yourself. So I, I speak in favor of this ordinance.
Anything to add from the attorney's side?
I think you covered most of it. For people that were paying attention, there was a lot of firearms-related legislation that was proposed this year. One of the other things that did pass was some additions as far as requirements that are going to be much more burdensome for folks to secure concealed carry license or And this is kind of a dovetails along with that in that it limits locations for folks that do carry, and including those that have concealed carry licenses. Luckily, there's the ability for us to mitigate some of that. And so, as you stated, this is as close to being able to maintain status quo as we can. Some other locations have also looked at this. The plain reading of, of the legislation requires an ordinance, and not everybody's actually done that. But I think we are following the exact letter of the requirements in order to maintain the rights for the constituents and citizens of Elbert County. And so, you know, it is, it is up for consideration for the board to approve today.
Okay, appreciate that. Yeah, you had mentioned, I believe, our neighbors in El Paso and Douglas took quicker action via resolution, but I know the statute itself does say ordinance, and as a statute, it seems more appropriate that it be balanced by an ordinance versus a resolution. At this point, I'd open for public comment if there is any. All right, seeing none, we'll close public comment. As we stated, it does impact the ability of folks to, you know, defend themselves and others, so it clearly is impactful of, of life, health, and safety, and therefore, I believe can be adopted on a second reading, does not have to go to a third.
Yes, with, with health, safety, welfare-related items, those are kind of magic words that allow adoption at this point, yeah.
I appreciate that. Therefore, I'd ask for a motion to approve and enact the ordinance as of its signing today.
I will make that motion, but the second reading, I was concerned that we needed to have a third reading, but based on your opinion, I'm comfortable with that. So I move to approve an ordinance to protect the right to carry in sensitive spaces in accordance to SB 24-131.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve and adopt this ordinance on second reading. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. I'd accept a motion to close public hearing on this item.
Mr. Chairman, I move we close public hearing on the ordinance for the right to carry in sensitive places in accordance with SB 24-131.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, close public hearing. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. All right, motion carries. We're out of public hearing. Our next item was final approval of the fleet management policy update. This has been before us several times over the last month or two. We incorporated all comment that was received appropriately and had that kind of the intended final draft published for this meeting. I don't believe we received any other comments since then, so.
No, we have taken a look at all of the feedback that we've received. All departments did have an opportunity to do so, and there was quite a few good suggestions and additions, corrections, that sort of thing. Those that were appropriate to incorporate certainly have been, and that's gotten us to where we are today, which I think is a fairly robust, comprehensive policy that is an improvement on the policy that has previously been implemented.
I did have the opportunity yesterday to talk with Monte and Ethan, our, our new, newly, newly hired fleet manager, had a chance to read through it as well. I mean, a lot of it was based on work he had done prior to departure, so I think we can move forward with a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the fleet management policy update as presented.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the updates to the fleet management policy. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. All righty. Agenda items for our next meeting. As we, our last meeting in, in June, if we could from finance, just kind of get a thumbs up that we're on, we're on track for getting our audit submitted and, and scheduling of an outbrief on that. I believe we're looking at the outbrief. It's the first meeting in, in July. Okay. And then certainly we'll be rolling into next year's budget process. Do we have anything else you'd like to? Okay. I don't think we had any lingering items from this meeting, but at least it's a small start. Obviously, we'll have our minutes.
And then I will also have something, I believe, at that point in time, related to the agreement for the upgrade or improvement of County Road 158.
Okay, thank you. All right. Okay, so with that, we do have no more business this morning, but we have four land use items planned for this afternoon. One S U R for HVAC business, two site plans within the economic development zone, one for a concrete ready-mix plant, one for a potential RV and boat storage, and then we've got some minor, more housekeeping regulatory updates from, for zoning and subdivision regulations. So those will, those hearings and the discussion on the regulation updates will take place here at, at 1:00 PM. It's, we'll call it 10:29, and we're in recess until that period, that time. Thanks. Appreciate everybody coming out today.